Good evening and welcome to the November 25th meeting of the Florissant City Council. I see we have Cub Scout pack here, pack 882. Gentlemen, would you please come to the front of the dais and lead us into Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, gentlemen. Before I call the roll, if there are anyone who wishes to speak tonight on a matter other than a public hearing, we have a new system where you would fill out an information card by the door right there, and we will have that brought to the front so when I will call for hearing from citizens. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Gribb?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Stennett?
Here.
Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Lee?
Seeing way of a quorum, I call this meeting to order. I have a statement from the mayor's office. The mayor had an unexpected medical emergency condition requiring hospitalization and minor surgery. He is expected to return to normal activities after the Thanksgiving holiday and is currently resting at home. I know we will welcome him back with open arms on our meeting on December 9th, and I know the council is thinking about him. Get well soon, Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes from our meeting and executive session meeting on November 11th. Do you have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Pagano moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our work session budget minutes from our meeting on November 20th. Are there any additions or corrections? Mr. Schmidt moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have hearing from citizens. There are no cards filled out. Next on the agenda, we have communications. There are none. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. Public hearing - 13, excuse me, 13-11-027.
Public hearing will be held by the city of Florissant City Council and the council chambers at 9:55 Rues St. Francois on Monday, November 25th, 2013, at 7:00 PM and the following proposition. To rezone for Bright Works, the company, the property located at 475 North Highway 67 from B3 Extensive Commercial District to B5 Planned Commercial District to allow for the operation of a car wash. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard and women with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Good evening, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Kevin Camp. I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants.
Thank you, sir.
And I don't know if we can make this work or not with the...
Let's see. Is that what that's supposed to be doing?
That's a bit of P&amp;Z. I think everything I had on the presentation should be in your packets as well, so we'll just kind of, we'll kind of go from there and see if we can, if it comes up. Again, my name is Kevin Camp. I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants and the civil engineer for Wallace Companies, and their car wash division is seeking...
Welcome to Florissant, the beautiful city. Florissant is a bustling community of over 50,000 residents. Located in the northwest suburbs of the metropolitan St. Louis area, situated near the confluence of the Mississippi and Missouri rivers, Florissant is a city with a rich past and a busy and productive present and a sparkling future. The city stands as a model for others of its size. Why? Well, maybe it's due to the outstanding facilities and services, but perhaps it's due to some unique assets. And we'll talk about these key features in a moment, but first, let's start at the beginning. By taking a...
Okay. Here we go. I do have a, I had a PowerPoint and I hooked it up. I thought the same way we did the last one at P&amp;Z.
Function F4, will it put it up on the screen? Hang on. Let's try that again. There you go.
Not a rule.
Oh, I got it. I got it. There you go.
All right, well, there we go. All right. So, the projects are going to be located on the site of the former Commerce Bank. Currently, it's been, it's demolished, and so what we tried to do was show you here what we're envisioning for the site. It's a tunnel car wash that, that we were, introduce a whole lot more green, green space than it's there currently, and, and also close some of the existing curb cuts and limit the access on one that's still remaining open. From the front of it, at the top of the screen there, just trying to superimpose that so it can get an idea of what it would look like, and this is the entrance side, so looking from the rear of the property forward. I did put this video in here. This is from another location, but it is the same type of building. The building they're, they're going to erect on the site is actually manufactured and delivered to the site, and we're making some modifications to meet the, to come closer in meeting the all masonry ordinance. So, we are going to build some of the actual shell ourselves, but the, the structure itself is something that comes and is part of the package of the system that's being installed. This will be the first one in the state, and, and as you can see, this is coming in from the entrance side. The building itself is mostly glass, predominantly glass, so it allows a lot of natural light in it. Differing from other, some of the other car washes is that it gives the, the customer that experience to feel that openness, also allowing that natural light, and then that also helps with the heating to some extent as well. The greenhouse effect inside of there helps limit the amount of heat they actually have to put in the building during the winter. And this does kind of get drawn out, and of course, I talked too fast to get through So, again, we've, we focused the, the exit of the car wash to be more towards Limburg so there wouldn't be any adverse noise impacts. We did have other, a couple other site considerations to work with. This is a typical building. They're predominantly Ephesus buildings everywhere else they're built here. We put a lot of masonry into the building. This is kind of a picture at night to just give you the idea of, you know, how the light is going to work on that site. Through the, the property transaction, they are acquiring three parcels. It's the 475 North Limburg, which we're asking you to rezone, and then the two residential parcels on the back. Those are actually going to remain as is. They just are part of that transaction, but they're really, we're not proposing to change the lot lines or anything like that, so really, we're just looking at that front portion to redevelop. Just go to the landscaping plan here. We do, we're proposing two different things adjacent to that residential to provide the buffer. A combination of a masonry fence will be where the, there's a residential home that's back here, so we're putting the masonry fence there, and then we're choosing to use the White Oaks on 10-foot centers for, for this portion, primarily just to allow us access to maintain those rear tier parcels from our parcel. And it still provides, you know, the needed screening. Additionally, we did have some thoughts in the landscaping to beef it up a little bit here, so as cars are coming around, it helps reduce some of the, the headlight glare. And that's kind of, up front, we did, up front, we are, we are putting a 40-foot green space in the front yard that does allow for better, better use of some of that streetscape, and we're also mimicking some of those patterns of the streetscape that are already implemented up and down Limburg. Lighting and all that will meet codes. And then, this is the, the building that we're proposing, as you can see, in contrast to the, the one that I'd shown you from, that's already existing, we're using brick on the towers, both, both of the towers, and then the glass, and then on the, on the front and the side where the sign bands are, that will be in Ephesus material, and this, this does describe some of the various accents and the blues and things like that that we're using throughout the building. I will answer questions about that, but I don't know if I need to particularly point all those out. And then, even along the, the glass face, we are putting a stone, natural stone along that, that wainscote, for lack of better terms, at the bottom. At P&amp;Z, did want to see some of the, the framing structural type of items, so we did include those, and then some typical wall sections to demonstrate the masonry compliance and the general color palette as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions I can. I do have the, some representatives from Wallace Company that can answer any of the other operational and those types of questions you may have.
Mr. Gribb?
Yes, I met with Mr. Russell and Mr. Camp and several other representatives of Wallace Oil over the past several months discussing this project. When they first came in with their drawings, there was very, very little masonry on this building, and I pointed out to them that we needed to change a lot of things on the building, especially taking out the Ephesus and putting in masonry to comply with our masonry ordinance. And the Wallace Oil Company was very accepting of the suggestions that I made, and they went back and redid a lot of their plans and, of course, added a lot of masonry to this building, including that rock-like trim along the bottom of the glass. It's a very modern-looking building. As you can see, a lot of glass and now in somewhat compliance with our masonry ordinance. The site there has been vacant for a long time. Something needed to go in there. I was a bit concerned at first with the proximity of the residences along Loke's Drive, which is behind, he put on one of those, yeah, let's see, oh, it's dead battery. Kevin, point out the area where the, or the masonry fence is going to be, the masonry wall.
Right here.
Yeah, and the resident right behind there on Loke's, that will, he'll be blocked from any light by that concrete fence. The other parcels back there are either grassy or the old parking lot from the, from the bank, and that's not going to be changed. The residents along Loke's were very happy to hear about that. As a matter of fact, some of them suggested that they, the residents chip in and buy that ground because they kind of like looking back there where there's a little bit of a wild area. There's a creek that runs along there. Kevin, can you point that out right there? And so, from my contact with the people that live around there, they were all quite happy that something's going in and that it's not going to really impact them very much. The sound from the, the machines, the wash will be primarily focused out towards Limburg and not towards the back of the, the building where the residents, yeah, that's a good one right there, not where the residences are. It's, it's a good project. We worked hard on this. We worked on it for a long time, and the petitioners got through planning and zoning with a bit of difficulty because there was a continuance, and there's some timeframe in here where I think they would like to get this thing put up with, with the holidays coming up and everything, and the postponement was really going to set them back. That's why you have a first reading on, on this project tonight, because they had been set back and things weren't working right, but now it seems like everything's in place. I, as the councilperson from Ward 2, am 100% behind this thing. I think it looks like, it looks like a great building, modernistic, something that might perk up the area a little bit over there. It will definitely improve that empty lot that's sitting there, and hopefully, we can do something with the rest of that property and where the other stores are, the Sears store, et cetera, and maybe get that spruced up a little bit, too. But we're really talking about this right now, and I think this is a good start, a good beginning. I would appreciate the council getting behind me on this thing and getting it, getting it through. I think it's, it's, I think it's good for Florissant. It's good for the people. It's good for Wallace Oil. It's good for all of us. Plus, we tax them. Okay? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gribb. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple questions on the, on that design. Is that a patent of your company or...
No, it's actually, it's by Tommy's Car Wash Systems, and I think they're based in, I think Oklahoma, if I remember, but I can't remember. But Tommy's Car Wash System basically designs not only the building itself, but the, the technology and of the like inside of the building, how the car is washed and, and the systems that are involved in that actual wash. It's a, it's a, it's a package deal, if you will. These have been built in Michigan. They've been built, I know, in Oklahoma, in several other places throughout the country. This will be the first one in Missouri, and really, this brand, for lack of better terms, Tommy's, is actually the brand that Wallace Companies will be, will start to use, and they're, they're on the run concepts, as well as the standalones, and this is the first standalone that, that they're envisioning. This won't be the last one either, but, and that's where the Bright Works Wash Company logo and name comes from. So, it is a package kind of deal, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to, I'll agree with Mr. Gribb on this. I think it'd be a, it'll look very nice on Limburg. I think it's a neat-looking building. It's, like you said, it's modern, and I, I like glass structures. I think they're really, they're really nice-looking, so I think it'd be a good addition to, to the Limburg corridor.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Egan?
Yeah, is this going to be a 24-hour operation?
No, it's not anticipated to be a 24-hour operation. I think we, we did an early open around 6:00 AM and then a late closing in the 10:00 PM at, at the max, I think, is what we were thinking, but it will not be a 24-operation.
And is this staffed with people who like dry your car at the end?
Yes. Yeah, it'd be two to three people on, on the max shift envisioned, and they'll be basically, let me get to a better plan. Nope, 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 nope. So, basically, there's, there'll be an attendant that you can actually purchase a wash from, and then there'll also be several lanes that you can drive through if you're like a wash club member, or if you want to just pay at a kiosk type of thing. And so, you'll have the, all those options available. There'll be somebody there, and additionally, there'll be somebody there to make sure you get on the conveyor system correctly, and if there's any, you know, restock vending machines, and then make sure the vacuums are working correctly, and yes, all those types of customer needs will be met. So, it's not a, you know, set it and forget it kind of thing. There's always, there will always be staff there when it's open.
Okay, I guess, I guess you didn't understand all my questions. Will there be people there to like dry your car up at the end, or you go to some of these car washes?
No, no, no. It is, it's not a, a full-service type of wash in that, in that nature, no.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Camp, I want to thank you for coming to Florissant and working with the administration, especially Mr. Gribb, and with P&amp;Z. Sometimes it seems like a long process, but anyhow, it's well worth it for everybody, and I'm glad you picked Florissant. Before I close this public hearing, or is there anyone in the attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, Mr. Gribb moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Camp. Next on the agenda, we have Old Business Second Readings, Bill 8943. I'll move to postpone this, this bill to our meeting on December 9th, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Bill 8947. Mr. Lee moves for postponement to our meeting on December 9th, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8959.
Motion for a second.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to a pre-existing B5 zoning district to allow for the operation of a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located at 12925 New Halls Ferry Road.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Gribb. Oh, Mr. Lee, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our last meeting, we had various questions about whether or not the drive-through had been looked at by planning and zoning and had been discussed. I think we've had an opportunity to look at our, the minutes from planning and zoning, and I think we have a representative here, and if it wouldn't be putting her on the spot, I'd like to suspend the rules and bring her up for some comment on the drive-up situation.
Mr. Lee moves for suspending of the rules, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Boyle?
Somehow, I've ever seen people come here and get a pass. I don't know what it is.
Well, we saw you, Mrs. Boyle, and couldn't resist, but I know, I know you have had an opportunity to review the minutes as well, and there was some confusion at our last meeting, and a lot of questions. One of the comments that was made is, is that, yes, they had extensively discussed the stacking of cars and everything in the meetings, and we didn't see that in the minutes, so...
The first meeting, I was not here. I was out of town, but when I reviewed the minutes, they did not discuss stacking. And at the second meeting, we really, at the first meeting, if you look at the minutes, they said they were not going to use the drive-through at all, so there was no discussion. At the second, he came, and again, we did, we never dealt with the owner. This was part of our problem. We were dealing with an architect and not the owner. But I did watch the last council meeting, and I know the owner came to that meeting. And that's really the first time, I think, that the, it was discussed, the architect said, well, they may use a drive-up. And we had questions, if you've looked at the location, unless they disappeared today, there are these really strange blue poles on the parking lot that, as part of my motion, I asked that they be removed, and they, there's, they were still there yesterday. Now, I didn't drive by today. But I think those poles had been used to direct traffic, and when we asked about those, the architect basically said, well, we'll take care of them. But they still have electrical connections on the top, so they really have not addressed fully, I didn't feel, after, after watching what they said last time. They obviously have more plans for a drive-through than we understood at planning and zoning. And if we overlooked something, I apologize, but it did not come through real clear that there was going to be any type of drive-through. So, I don't know if I've answered your questions, but...
You have.
We had some real issues on their landscaping also, and that's reflected in our minutes, but, you know, I'm delighted to see the place occupied. I mean, that's, that's the good news, is that somebody's, but there are some real deficiencies to what they've done so far. It was, that's where we are. Thank you.
You know, and I guess that, in the, in the drawings that we got as council, it also indicated the drive-through was closed, and I think it spurred that conversation that night. Ms. Egan asked about a walk-up window, which they had at another location, and I'm, I'm still a little bit unsure as to what we're approving or what we're going to authorize here. So, is there anyone here from, I don't think there was anybody here from them tonight, but, you know, I, I don't know that I'd be ready to approve this as written without clarifying, you know, what we're going to do with, with drive-through, drive-up, walk-up, whatever it might be, so...
Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I never got a call from them, so, you know, I've not talked to them since then, and I, I know where we left it was, it was not going to really be what we, what I would normally consider a drive-through, which would be you order food and then you proceed to the window. This was going to be more of a pickup window for people to call in, so I, I don't know if that changes our definition in the, in the ordinance, if we would still consider it and call it a drive-through.
I would not recommend that we call it a drive-through.
See, that's what I was, that's where I was leading to when I was...
You're going to use a pickup window, Mark. That's exactly the term that I would recommend.
Yeah, that's what I would think we should probably do, more so than anything else, so it's not confused with a drive-through.
Correct. I agree.
And that was what the definitions that the owner said, that's what they were planning on doing, was it was going to be more of a pickup window where people would call, place their order, and then have the convenience of being able, rather than go in and sign and pick up their order, they could go up to this window and pay for it and pick up the order. Because he even stated, if somebody would drive through and actually want to place an order, they would do that, but obviously, they couldn't sit there because the orders are made to order, so they would just basically tell them to, you know, come back in about 15, 20 minutes when the order's ready, and then come back through and drive-through, so, yeah. I would be in favor of that, is changing that language to a pickup window as opposed to a drive-through, which is what it said, I think.
Actually, it does say a drive-through, so I, if the council wants to consider it this evening, I would recommend that you change Section 1, and I'll read it in part where it's "The subject of the regulations, the B5 Planned Commercial District with permitted uses allowed being a sit-down and carryout restaurant with a pickup window," and then it carries on. And similarly, you would do the same thing with subsection 1 where it's headed permitted uses. It would read, "The uses permitted for this property shall be limited to a sit-down and carryout restaurant with a pickup window," and then carry on with that language.
Yeah, because I think that eliminates the use, the necessity to, to deal anything with stacking and all that. I think that, that solves that problem, I think, and then if they ever want to do a drive-through, then I'll have to come back and we have to reamend it, but I, I think that solves the problem. So, I'll, I'll move, I'll make that motion to change those from drive-through to a pickup window.
I'll second it.
Mr. Schmidt moves to amend that in the two sections, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Mr. Schmidt moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Mr. Egan?
You know, I'm going, I plan on voting for this, but I just, there's something about this I just don't like. I mean, you know, he apparently wasn't very truthful with, or maybe wasn't all informed with planning and zoning, and he came here and he wasn't informative of us very well, so I, I just, I'm just very concerned that we're, although I think everyone on this dais wants that building filled and it's been empty, and I saw it for a long time, but I just, I just have my concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Hessel, would it be appropriate, or would it be possible...
Mr. Hessel, would it be appropriate, or would it be possible for us to put a one-year review on the pickup window?
You're granting special use. Legally, you really don't have the right to place conditions like that, meaning termination points like that.
Okay.
Again, I think Mark is suggesting that you have a pickup window. And if, in fact, it's being used for some other purpose, we can address that.
Okay.
Meaning if it's being used as a drive-through, we can address that, either administratively by issuing citations, or you can revoke the special use permit.
Okay.
If alternatively, they want to come back and seek what we all consider to be a drive-through, then they'd have to go back to planning and zoning and come to the city council.
That address you, Mr. Lee? I think that's a good...
It really isn't a special use permit, is it?
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
You're right. I'm sorry. It's an amendment to the B5, but we still could cite them, and they'd need an amendment to the B5. I'm sorry, Mark. It's a special use within a B5.
Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill 8959, consubordinate ordinance number 8010. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8960. Mr. Gribb moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7760 from Candy's Restaurant and Grill to Zima LLC DBA Dogs &amp; Fries for the location and operation of a sit-down, carryout, and catering restaurant located at 503 Paul.
Mr. Gribb moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance transferring special use permit number 7760 from Candy's Restaurant and Grill to Zima LLC DBA Dogs &amp; Fries for the location and operation of a sit-down, carryout, and catering restaurant located at 503 Paul.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill 8960 becomes ordinance number 8011. Next on the agenda, we have substitute bill 8961. Mr. Lee moves to accept the substitute bill. Second, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lee moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Florissant for the fiscal year commencing on December 1st, 2013, and ending on November 30th, 2014, and providing for its effective date.
Mr. Lee moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Florissant for the fiscal year commencing on December 1st, 2013, and ending on November 30th, 2014, and providing for its effective date.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Substitute bill 8961 becomes ordinance number 8012. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8962.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending section 125.065A, job classifications and grade level by amending the grade level for selected job classifications and by adding job classifications.
Mr. Caputa moves for, Mr. Lee, sorry about that.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to open this up for discussion and possibly offer an amendment to this bill. During the numerous work sessions, we discussed several things, one of which was that we're not doing a pay raise for any of our employees this year because of our financial situation. And we're dipping into the reserves pretty deeply for, to present a balanced budget. And during those discussions, and I made an attempt to go back and read all my notes today and review the notes, I believe the council had determined that we were not going to change any pay classifications this year. We do have to create some pay classifications for the new positions that we're creating by, with the golf course. And there was a request to take the current position of deputy building commissioner and change that to be the plan reviewer. And I have that in my notes. However, I did not have in my notes that we were going to do any grade adjustments. And I don't know if that one inadvertently made it on there, the last job classification. But I'm just wondering what everybody else's recollection was about that, because I don't think that, I thought it was something we said we were not going to change any this year. So I'm opening the floor for...
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes, Mr. Lee. That discussion was conducted at the work sessions, even to the point that I recall discussing that if we were going to upgrade positions, and then what responsibilities were there to drive that type arrangement. And there were even offered suggestions about changing responsibilities and all, and that was declined. So that very item of discussion was made, and it was decided by the council not to upgrade any of the positions.
Thank you, Mr. Stinnett.
Then I'll be offering to amend this bill to eliminate the last position, IT Systems Administrator, to a grade level nine. I would like to eliminate that from this budget and leave the position where it currently resides.
Mr. Lee moves to amend that portion of the budget, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The post. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Mr. Lee moves for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending section 125.065A, job classification and grade level by amending the grade level for selected job classifications and by adding job classifications.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill 8962 becomes ordinance number 8013. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8963. I'll move for a second, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 7928, establishing new compensation plan for the seasonal employees of the City of Florissant and containing its effective date clause.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 7928, establishing a new compensation plan for the seasonal employees of the City of Florissant and containing an effective date clause.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill 8963 becomes ordinance number 8014. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8964. Mr. Gribb moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 7753, which established pay grades for all full-time positions by incorporating additional provisions for classified employees.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance amending ordinance number 7753, which established pay grades for full-time positions by incorporating additional provisions for classified employees.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill 8964 becomes ordinance number 8015. Next on the agenda, we have new business, board appointments. Seeing none. Next on the agenda, we have requests. A request from Ward Five for four chickens, for Clinton Drake for the property located at 34 Graybrook Lane. Health Department has recommended approval. I trust Mr. Custer, Mr. Gerald's, I'll move for approval. Seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Are we naming those?
No. Just forget. Forty St. Alice, with a drop the eggs off, okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have bills for first reading, Bill 8966.
Ordinance to rezone for Wallace Petroleum LC, the property located at 475 North Highway 67, from B3 extensive commercial district to B5 planned commercial district to allow for the construction and operation of a car wash.
Next on the agenda, I would like to make a motion to cancel our December 23rd council meeting. Historically, we've done this because it's close to the holiday. Mr. Lee, second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Mr. Stinnett?
I think first, I want to remind everyone that December 7th here at City Hall, from 2:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, we will have the celebration of Christmas for the citizens of Florissant. We'll have cookies, punch, Santa Claus, Mrs. Santa Claus, and lots of activities. So bring everyone out. And I'd also like to add to that, just for all the kids to know, that after our meeting of December 9th, on December 10th, I am flying out. I'm going to North Pole, to the North Pole on December 10th. So I'm going to be looking for Santa Claus, if anybody is interested.
Thank you, Mr. Stinnett. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. For the last final time, I've had 180 tickets in my hot hand for Guns &amp; Hoses. I'm down to 10. If you want to go to Guns &amp; Hoses, I have 10 tickets left. Get ahold of me. Also, a warm congratulations to Officer Andy Hale and his lovely wife, who had a baby girl on Sunday afternoon, Emma Hale. Congratulations to him.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And just remember, it is Black Friday starts Friday. So everybody's going out and shopping, be observant of where your surroundings are, just to be safe. And all these little scams are starting early this year. So just be aware of your surroundings and who you talk to, and have a safe holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I also would like to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And also remember that Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and I want to remind people to shop Chamber First. We have excellent shops here in the City of Florissant, and we could sure use your business here. And Mr. Stinnett, if we all write our list, can you take it up to the North Pole with you and make sure that it gets delivered? Okay, thank you. Last year, I got a bundle of coal, and I don't know what that was all about, so...
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I also would like to wish a happy Thanksgiving to all the residents of the City of Florissant. Mr. Caputa moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.